Hello, good evening. It is 5:03 PM on August 26, 2024. This is a regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are myself, President Bumpus, Director Barnes, Director Campbell, Director Ed Scorn, Superintendent Sean Woodward, District Leadership Team, School District Staff, as well as members of the community. Director Whitfield will not be in attendance this evening. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link attached to tonight's agenda that is found on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are so happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters, there have been previous discussions on these issues either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff, or through outside research. Those wishing to address the board during the public comments must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting at 5:00 PM. Any form submitted after the meeting has started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 2.05. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
The move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated August 26, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated August 26, 2024. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 3.01, we have the introduction of our new building/school administrators. Hey Shannon.
Hey, I'm Shannon Tark. I know all of you, but are Director of Secondary Ed. And I am super excited to introduce our three new school administrators. I'm going to start with the one that I almost forgot to send in any information about because I know her so well. Jamie Johnson, who has been a teacher at Monroe High School for several years, amazing leader and activities director as well as teacher. And she is now joining us at Monroe High School as one of our assistant principals. I'm gonna have them, I'll introduce all three and then I'm gonna walk away and they can talk. And then I'm going to, I think I turned it off. Okay, Sarah Alvarez is next. Come on down. Sarah is joining us from Redmond Elementary School in Lake Washington School District. We are super excited to have such a steal. And she has already hit the ground running and been working on PLC work as well as getting to know our community up at both Mount V Elementary and Freyland's Elementary. Super excited. And last but not least, Julio Chavez. Okay, they're all going this. Julio is coming to us from Wenatchee School District, where he was most recently a teacher. And he is jumping right into his first leadership position. I'm just gonna go. And he has an extensive background in the PLC work over in Wenatchee. And when we were at the conference last week, he was able to really jump in and start working with our teacher leaders to help develop that culture and move us forward. He will be at Park Place Middle School as the Assistant Principal. And they are yours.
Okay, what's the most interesting thing you've learned so far being here for Sarah and Julio? And then what are you looking forward to most this coming school year for all three of you?
I'll go first. The most, you said the most interesting?
This one over here? Is it working? Okay. So just to make sure that I understand the question, did you say the most interesting thing so far? Okay, in general, okay. I think one of my big realizations coming, so I come from the other side of the mountains and I didn't know that there is no AC here. I was like, oh, I go into my house and it's so hot. And so the first thing I did when I moved, I went to Costco and got one of those portable ACs and doesn't even keep it cool though. But that's one of my big ahas, just from the area.
And so coming from Lake Washington, it's the second largest district in the state. So there was about 200 elementary principals or principals. So I think just coming here is really nice and getting to know everybody and everyone knows your name. I come into the office and they know me even though I don't know them. So I just really like the small town feel, the small part of it. And I really enjoy that.
The last year, I really love talking about feelings and emotion. And I have, and I have learned very quickly that I get to manage adult emotion when I'm used to managing kid emotion. I would say that's my biggest learning in the last two weeks. Does that help? I can give you a last year or two if you want. I'm actually really looking forward to the staff that the high school has hired and seeing how they grow and what they take on. And as we continue our PLC process and that journey that we're on, seeing how they can actually add to it. And then also as an activities director, a former activities director. Yep, that's a hard one for me, is getting them excited and active in our community and being a force of nature within that and giving kids outlets that weren't there before by the people that we've hired.
What am I most excited about? I think, so I live in Sultan. And when I was working in Redmond, I also lived a mile from the school. And that's one thing that I missed when I moved. And so one of my things that I said in the interview was that I was really excited to work in the community where I live, even though it's Sultan, but you know, I'm here all the time in Monroe. So I just really am excited to see families and the kids out and about.
For me, one of the things that I really look forward to is just continuing the journey that the district's on with the PLC work and really diving into assessment and just kind of moving the needle that way. Because like Shannon said, at my former school, they were really, they were honed in on the PLC process and they were committed. So I feel right at home here with what Monroe's doing.
Thank you all for your amazing answers.
I was always told that if you're going to be administrator, you should be ready to answer questions on the spot. And I think they did a great job.
It is great.
Welcome to all three.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 4.01, public comment. And we have no. We've received, we've received the public comment online and every director received a copy. Perfect, thank you. Okay, Agenda Item 5.01, territory transfer request. And this is for Sean.
All right, so at the last meeting, you had reviewed a transfer of territory petition. And just as a reminder, representatives from both our district and the Snohomish School District Board, along with both of the superintendents of the districts met. We met on July 18th. We discussed the petition. And then through that district-to-district negotiation process, it was recommended by this group to deny the petition. And you reviewed that at the last meeting. And essentially, the reason was just because that both districts realized that there's a choice transfer process in place that allows movement between districts when there's room. And then really just for the simple fact that it's not in the best interest of either district to set a precedent of transferring territory to other districts, especially with our heavy reliance on local tax dollars to operate the school district. So those are the primary reasons for that recommendation. And then tonight, we're just asking you to formally make a motion to either deny or accept.
Did Snohomish already make their formal motion?
Theirs is this week. They had their first meeting a couple of days after ours and shared, basically had the same conversation.
Okay, we, the Board of Directors of Monroe School District, have given consideration to the factors presented in making our decision to approve or deny the proposed transfer of territory from Monroe School District to the Snohomish School District. Our current consideration included reviewing the documents submitted by the citizen petitioners to the respective Board of Directors and recommendations from our negotiated, from our negotiation representatives. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District deny the transfer territory request.
Is there a second?
Second.
After consideration of the factors pertinent to the transfer of territory petition, the Monroe School District Board of Directors moves that the transfer of territory from Monroe School District to Snohomish School District be denied on the basis that the evidence rationale and way that the facts lead to the denying, lead to denying the transfer of territory. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Agenda Item 5.02, Salem Woods Elementary/PTA Grant Agreement. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District accept the Salem Woods Elementary donation to the Monroe School District grant in the amount of $6,766 for the Soul Express purpose of purchasing and installing a reader board for the outside of the school.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors accepts the donation received from Salem Woods Elementary PTA. Discussion?
I'm excited for them. That's gonna look really great out there. Very cool.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Agenda item has passed four to zero. Agenda Item 5.03, consideration of updated revisions to Policy 3245, students and telecommunications devices. And this is our second reading. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the revisions made to Policy 3245, students and telecommunications devices.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the revisions made to Policy 3245, students and telecommunications devices. Discussion?
Yeah, I just want to thank the extra work that's gone into this. I think we've spent four or five board meetings discussing this. I know this is very new for school districts in Washington State. And I think a lot of the other districts that have already kind of led the way on that to help us finding some things that are successful and probably not so successful, but then also putting our own focus. And I think also, I just want to really thank the administrators who have put a lot to kind of customize what this is supposed to look like at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. And also for Sky Valley, there's a lot that goes into this. And I think that I'm okay with this also being a living document. We're gonna see how well this works this year. And if there needs to be adjustments, then we'll make those adjustments because we need to create a learning environment for our students.
Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. Agenda item has passed four to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 6.12, approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated August 26, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated August 26, 2024. Discussion?
I just wanted to double check on the facility use fees because I didn't see a finalized version for the 24-25 school year. I kind of saw everything else that we had. So I just wanted to double check. Unless, unless I just totally missed it. Civics and District, yeah. Yeah, there's a ton of attachments, but I. Oh, I didn't even see that. It's not on my, maybe I'm not signed in.
Yeah, there were like 10 pages. But I think the idea was that we were gonna go with the average rates and then we were gonna move the Class III group to the Class II rates.
Yeah, yeah. So that's $7, $7 an hour for that. Yeah, okay, perfect, good. Thank you. I just wanted to double check.
Sure.
Hey Adam, where you up here? I just want to thank you. I know that we had a lot of questions last time and I know that you put a lot of work into those. So I appreciate you and your team being diligent about that and trying to make it, one, accessible and affordable for the people who are doing it. But two, also something that it's gonna make it sure that we can continue to make it affordable and also something we can do as a district. So I appreciate all that work. Thank you for that.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Adam. Also, we just like, really like having you here.
Sure, I'm happy to be here.
For us for so long. Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 7.01. It is the superintendent update. And we've only got one of those.
All right.
Superintendent Woodward.
Okay, you might have heard enough from me this morning at the kickoff. That was really fun this morning. Thanks for your attendance. And I sure appreciated the, some of our high school folks getting the cheerleaders there, the band there. It was really good energy. And, and a lot of effort went into pulling it off from a lot of different people. So I really want to thank the administrative team here and, and just all the behind the scenes stuff that I think is a very positive start to this school year for sure. We have on Thursday, talk about pulling something off. So Jennifer and Shannon were tasked, I don't know when, we talked about this optional day, probably about six months ago. We talked about, gee, wouldn't it be nice to have most of our staff attend an optional paid day? You know, because we're typically at around 70%. We're thinking, it'd be so cool. How could we get 100% of the people to show up? And we, I don't know who floated this idea. I certainly would not even admit it if it was me because of what it's taken to pull this off, to run a workshop format for this Thursday. So essentially, it's just people, it's basically differentiated staff development. There's a menu of options for our staff. Basically, basically what has been pulled off, and it's gonna be really cool on Thursday, there's 70 different, at least 70, I just counted them, different sessions that are being run Thursday for our staff. Some of them are repeating sessions, but they are excellent sessions. And basically, our principals really stepped up and teacher leaders. And we basically, basically just said, we just, we need your help. We're not gonna hire out for any of this. We have all of this internal expertise in the school district. And y'all have something that you can present and that you're really good at. And everybody signed up for something. So you're definitely welcome to attend Thursday at the high school. Just drop in on any of the sessions. I'll send you this link or if Shannon has her computer now, she could probably share it with you. It's an incredible array of options for staff. So I know one of our big pushes with our strategic plan is making sure people have the capacity to do the work that we're asking them to do. This really is a great reflection of the needs of this district. So super proud and impressed with the efforts of our admin team to pull that off. So that's happening Thursday. You're definitely welcome to attend. We have Wednesday night is our resource fair at Park Place from 4:00 to 6:00. And absolutely, obviously, welcome to attend that as well. We have, we're jumping back into with our advisory committees, et cetera. You know, there's a little lull in the summer, of course. But on Tuesday, we're getting our schedule advisory committee back together. Remember that there's a group looking at our block schedule and examining that at Monroe High School up against more traditional schedules. We're not alone. I was on a superintendent call last week in Cedar Woolley School District, Mount Vernon, a handful of other districts are doing similar studies this school year. So our goal is to still make a recommendation to this board right around Halloween, end of October, early November. So I'll be at that committee meeting on Tuesday. And we're still, they're still, I should say, in the comparison phase for sure. And so let's see, I think that's about it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Agenda Item 8.01, board reports and/or comments.
I just wanted to reiterate how exciting it was to be at the kickoff this morning at the high school. And it was also exciting and it was a little sad to see a little red car blocking traffic up there. But it's okay, Superintendent Woodward, we got you covered. No, I felt bad for you. No, the energy there was awesome. And what I really loved, I appreciate that you've taken the initiative to include not just the certificated staff, but the classified staff as well, because this is about the whole team and us moving forward. And that gets me really excited about the momentum for this school year and for our students and our families as well. We got a lot done last year and it was a lot to celebrate. There's still a lot of work to do. But I think that especially having the strategic plan, there was a lot of really good energy in the room about that being our North Star and continuing to move forward because it gives us something tangible to work towards. And we say, here is what I'm working at and it's right in front of you. And so I really appreciate the time that you took to share that vision with the team because I think it was really well received. And your admin team that continues to push that forward because that's not just you, that's you and the whole team going alongside. But thank you for that.
Not too much. We had a great visit to the fair on Friday and we got to see some of our FFA students and celebrate their success. So that was a lot of fun. My family was able to join. So we stayed a little bit longer and just enjoyed the fair. But other than that, not too much for me today.
Okay, so Sean and I got to go visit our transition to kindergarten class. A couple of weeks ago, we went to both Frank and Freyland's. And I had a really good conversation with this BP at Freyland's. And one of the things that we talked about, she was really just telling me, kind of giving me all of her ideas. And they all made so much sense. And one of the big things was when we talk about WA kids and the mandate that's there, you know, that our kindergarten teachers get together with the parents and the students and we're really setting them up for success for the school year, right? We're being proactive with that. So the parents who know the students the best are able to relay all of those things to the teacher. And you know, they're kicking off their school year. And why aren't we doing that for every single grade in elementary school to ensure that we're being proactive and setting them up for success in the beginning of the school year, especially as they change teachers? We're setting parents, students, and teachers up for success instead of then being reactive as we get later into the year. And it almost feels like it takes more time to correct course or figure things out when you're being reactive versus proactive. So I really felt like that was some good food for thought and turned to Sean and said, hey, maybe this is something we should be thinking about for future years to ensure that we're setting our students, teachers, and parents up for success at the highest levels, you know, before the school year really begins. So an idea and a thought I wanted to share with the rest of you. I also got the opportunity to go to the fair. And there's one student whose name I am forgetting that I want to make sure, nope. Nope, okay, so, all right, so I will start. And then you tell me who it is that I missed, Shannon. Okay, so Leela, we got to meet her and she showed us her two goats, Dill and Pickles, which I just loved. And she was so super sweet. And was it Sean you went in? No, Shannon, you were in there petting the goats. She was petting the goats. It was awesome. They were super sweet. And James's daughter Willow, super cute. She was like, no, I don't want to go in there and pet the goats. But they were really friendly and really cute. And I appreciated her taking the time to talk to us about the goats. And then Haley, remember Haley last year with funnel cake? She got first place. This year, her cow's name, get ready for this Jen, was Go Cougs.
Yes.
So we got, we got to see, we got to see Haley show Go Cougs. And this year, she took fifth place, which was awesome. She's always just super sweet and kind and will talk to us about any and all things related to FFA and cows. And then we also got to meet Erin and see her chickens and her turkeys that she was showing. And she was describing us the differences in the turkeys, you know, and how they go and they sell them and their bread specifically to be Thanksgiving dinner. So it was really interesting to hear about that and kind of see her perspective. Josh was our guide again this year and he did a fabulous job. And the student who was with him was Uridia. Okay, so Uridia was there as well and she was incredible. She, so Josh had his corsage that he put together that he was able to show us. And Uridia showed us her flower arrangements that she had there that she was showing. And they were both just really kind and amazing hosts as we went through our time at the fair. So just a big shout out to those students. I wanted to make sure that I recognized you and just thanked you for being so kind and for representing Monroe. Oh, and I can't forget the landscaping. So Monroe FFA landscaping, we took third place. And a shout out to, okay, what is the flower, Flower World? That's it. Shout out to Flower World for providing the bushes and plants and everything that the FFA needed to be able to put that display together. We really appreciate your partnership with our students in the FFA. So thank you so much for that. And then also with the kickoff today, not only was this the best kickoff I've ever been to, I mean, the drum line for the band being there and the cheerleaders lining the hallway as you come in. It's like, welcome back. It was, it was the most, I don't know, just, it was, it was intense with energy. It was awesome. So Sean, your talk was amazing, even with your car story. It was fabulous. And then afterwards, we had the U-Dub team. So it was Kristin Novak and what was the other lady's name? Lena Marie came and they were talking to us just about being a, being a school district that was inclusive and how, you know, we're on the front lines of what it is that we're doing. There are many states that don't have these inclusionary practices and that aren't, you know, including everyone. And so to hear what they had to say and to see them acknowledge how our different schools are doing so many good things and that even though the work sometimes is hard, you're still there. You're still showing up. You learn every day and you push forward because our students are worth it, every single one of them. So that was really uplifting to kind of see that and hear them, you know, go through their slides and the facts and the myths and just the things that have been occurring. So I'm super thankful that we're there, that we're a part of that work and that they have partnered with us in that. I think we are a better school district because of it. So it was really great to see that. And then just for you, Sean, when we did the breakouts, the debriefing, and I went with the Sky Valley crew, one of the first things that came out of a teacher's mouth at Sky Valley was, can we just take a moment to acknowledge the fact that Sean actually spoke about us at the kickoff? That he acknowledged us? And what a huge thing that is for the Sky Valley family that, that they're seen and that they're acknowledged and that they felt like they were a part of our strategic plan. I mean, just the, the joy that came off of that and how Karen had to tell me, we're in the strategic plan, you know, and everybody's been talking about this. And it makes a huge world of difference to our teachers and everybody over at Sky Valley. So I just want to thank you for that and let you know that even those little things that sometimes in the moment don't seem big, they have such a huge impact. So thank you for that. And I'm super excited for the school year. It was an awesome way to start it off today and I was just really happy to be a part of it.
Go Team Monroe. Yeah, Sean, just to echo it, they said over here, you did a great job today. I think you're such an example of honesty and integrity when we look at the strategic plan. I told Sean after his spiel for an hour, I said, I think people like you more because you were honest and your car broke down. So in Monroe, those things matter. So I am really excited for this upcoming school year and to visit schools. I can't wait to start setting up that calendar. And maybe even, this is the year we like, take a board meeting to schools, like I hear they used to do pre-COVID. Excited for the PED's policy and the procedure. I heard a lot from teachers today that they're just so excited to finally have something in policy that they can reference. that they can reference and something that's right now. And go Monroe. All right, it is 5:32 PM and tonight's meeting is adjourned.